Zoning Board of Appeals, please come to order. Would you please rise for this salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we begin the items on the agenda, let me just briefly say what the procedure of the ZBA is. The meeting is divided into two sections. During the first half of the meeting, we will hold public hearings on each of the items, and we'll do this in the order in which they're listed on the agenda. If you'd like a copy of the agenda, they're available in that little black tray that's on our counsel's desk. For each of the items, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, to state their name, and to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. And following that, we'll ask the applicant to very briefly describe what their application is about. Then members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions, get clarification, get further information about the applicant. After the ZBA members have had an opportunity to ask questions, the floor will then be open to any member of the general public that wishes to address that application, but that application only. Once that is completed, we will close the public hearing, or adjourn it if it's incomplete, and go on to the next item. Once we've held all the public hearings, we'll return for the deliberation phase, and again, we'll take the items in the order that they're listed on the agenda. During that part of the meeting, however, there is no further input from the public, but you are more than welcome to stay, listen to the deliberations. If you wish not to stay, you can call the zoning department in the morning to get the results of the deliberations. All right. The first item on our agenda, Mike Neshewat, 111 Spackenkill Road. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr.
Okay, just have a seat, and you'll have to speak into the microphone because we need to...
I'm waiting for somebody to come with me.
Oh, okay.
So it could be second call.
Okay, so we'll pass over and continue on. Item number two, Barbara Fitzgerald, 108 Innis Avenue.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to let the board know and the audience know that apparently my firm, Wallace &amp; Wallace, represented Barbara's business last year, but it's not an ongoing representation, so I don't believe that there's a conflict, but I wanted everyone to be aware. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
No, Barbara from, not personal, but her sign company, but again, there's no interaction other than that, so it's up to the board and the public if they want me to recuse myself.
Okay. It seems to me, and we've faced this a number of times...
Yes, we have.
If there's no current, you know, business or professional interaction, then this has never been an issue of conflict.
I want to be sure.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening. State your name, please.
Barbara Fitzgerald.
Ms. Fitzgerald, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you'd just tell us briefly what brings you here.
I have a deck in the back of my house, and previously, I was before the zoning Board of Appeals when I replaced an existing deck that was crumbling with another one and a newer one, and had to come here before you. Today, I'm here to ask for, to be able to put a roof over it, not the entire deck, but where there was previously an awning that I had over it. So it will not extend beyond the deck itself or beyond my roof line, which is even closer to the neighbor's lot line.
Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
All right. No question. Okay. So this is going to be a, I think you described a three-season room?
Well, it's not enclosed. It's just the roof itself that I'm planning to do at this time. I suppose you could enclose it at a future time, but it would have to be a three-season room, because I'm not replacing the flooring or putting heating or anything like that.
Okay. So the sides will be open?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Somehow from the drawing, I...
Well, because originally...
Oh, okay. Okay. I mean, it was, it was, all right. Thank you.
Originally, that was the plan, and it was a little overpriced for me, so I said roof will be fine.
Okay. All right. Now I got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then, just to clarify, your house is four feet from the property line, so this...
On that one side, yes.
Yeah, so this enclosed deck would just continue the line of the house?
Actually, it's in a little bit.
In a little, okay.
From the house.
Okay. Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Paul?
I'm Tony.
Tony. I'm sorry. I'm looking.
Don't call me late for dinner. No questions.
Okay. Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 108 Innis Avenue? Okay, hearing done. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, Frank Colora, 19 Autumn Drive.
How you doing, Jim?
Good evening. If you'd just state your name?
Sure, Frank Colora.
Mr. Colora, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay.
Okay, so if you'd just briefly describe what brings you here?
Sure. Just over the end of the last season, last summer, our pool, the liner, had gone. So since the liner had to be replaced, we had wanted to build a deck around the pool, but it was too expensive. So we decided to move the pool closer to the house, and since we had a deck existing there already, we just wanted to put a little extension on to just get to the front of the pool. So when I read up on the codes for, you know, how far the distance of the pool had to be, I was under the understanding that it had to be 15 feet from the property line. Currently, 16.8 feet from the property line. So when I submitted my plans for the new deck extension, I found out that I need to be 20 feet from the property line, so I'm just a couple of feet shy on one side. If I had known that from the beginning, I would have just slid it over a couple of feet, and I wouldn't have had this issue. That's basically it. I'm just requesting a couple of feet variance.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No questions.
Okay. We were out there, it...
Yeah, you can see what I'm trying to do.
Perfectly reasonable.
Yeah. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
And no questions.
Okay.
Tony? I don't know, Jim, or Carmen, I have no questions either. You're like Rodney Dangerfield.
Tony, move your ID this way so you can say it.
I have two, actually.
Okay.
No questions.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to address 19 Autumn Drive? Okay, seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Item four, Michael Decordova, 2404-2406 New Hackensack Road. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Okay, if you'd just state your name?
Michael Decordova, 2404 and 2406 New Hackensack Road.
Mr. Decordova, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, so you want to install some solar panels?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And tell us a little bit about...
Sure. So we want to try to maximize and make it worth it in the same regard. We don't want to cover the whole house with solar, so there are certain areas of the home I suppose we could cover with solar, and we've opted not to, particularly from the roadside. And I believe the proposed layout infringes upon the setback from the ridge, the side, and the gutters, the lower edge. And touring the property yesterday or the day before with members of the zoning board, thank you very much for spending your time to come to the house. Actually, I thought it was quite accessible, not only from the other side, but one area, there's a cupola which goes across both ridges of the roof. And then on the main house, there seem to be some vents, roof vents and other things, which won't be covered by solar. There seem to be some hip roofs by which entry could be made in addition to the reverse side of angle of the roof, and I was hoping you could positively act on the motion. My 12-year-old son could not be here tonight, but he thinks we can save the world with solar, and he was also hoping for a positive result and wanted me to express his wishes to you.
Okay. Okay. Christine, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Betty?
Well, I had a question for counsel. It occurred to me that the applicant is not telling us how much variance you're looking for. What it says is that you just want to... It says here to allow roof-mounted solar electric panels to be installed less than three feet from the edge of the roof. How far less? And is it the same amount all the way around?
It's not the same amount all around, and I can't speak precisely, but I know that in order to get a panel in, they will need to encroach, whether it leaves a foot or six inches, or two feet on some sides. I couldn't say, but I know it has to encroach in order to make it worth it. That's what the designer said. I'm sorry that I don't have... I tried to get a better overlay so it would show exactly what that is. They are most certainly, I could also reassure you, they are most certainly not going to be hanging over the roof anywhere. They will be less than the aggregate area of the roof, but they will be between the edge and three feet.
I think that's probably not. Our problem is that we are taught that we have to grant the minimum amount of variance that would still benefit the applicant, and by less than three feet, I mean, it's not an amount, so I find it difficult to, because we don't know where they're going to be.
Typically, when we have an applicant come in, the person from the solar company comes in with them, and we actually get a diagram from the roof so that we can say, okay, at the widest part, you need 14 inches, or 18 inches, or whatever. And the board needs that information in order to make its determination about how much of a variance you actually need. One of the criteria the board needs to look at is whether it's a substantial variance, and arguably, going from three feet to zero feet would be more substantial than going from three feet to two feet, and those are some of the considerations that the board needs to take into account. And I agree with Betty that I don't know that the design that we have now gives the board enough information to be able to make that decision.
What say, Mr. Chairman?
Well, let's continue with the questions and see where we come out on this, so... Art, do you, or Betty, do you have any others?
No, that's my biggest question, actually.
Okay. Art?
I think one of the questions to me is this new New York state law, that you can be within, what, 18 inches of the roof liner, or whatever it is that they're proposing, that we haven't seen it?
I wasn't able to get a copy of what was passed at the last meeting, and as I understand it, it's not actually in effect as a law yet, but it will be within days or weeks. But from what I understand, they are requiring three feet on a side near where you're putting the solar, so that, for example, if you were putting the solar on the south side, you could have three foot of clearance on the north side, and that the regulations will allow no closer than 18 inches to the ridge line of the roof, but they will allow you to go side to side, and they will allow you to...
Fall down to the drip rail.
Right. So the only restriction on the side where they're being installed would be not 18 inches from the ridge, and then provided that there was sufficient access on other parts of the roof. And I also don't know that we can answer that question yet either as to access from the other parts of the roof, given what we have from the applicant now. But that's a question for the board, if they feel that they can make that determination or not on what they have.
I think my question here is, you know, if this gentleman has to come back with the solar company, and if between that time and now, the state changes, he doesn't really need to come before us, probably.
Well...
If they reduce, if the state reduces, correct?
The town will need to change its ordinance as well. In order to continue with the current ordinance, the town would need to seek permission, but it may not all happen within the next 30 days.
Okay, that's...
Okay, if, just so I'm clear on this, if the state adopts the new standards that it's been published, then does the town ordinance, or does the state regulations take precedence?
I believe that the state regulations would control. I'm just not sure if they would control immediately, or if the town would have to go through the process of actually repealing the current law. I know, I believe it's the town's intention to make their regulations conform to whatever the state is as quickly as possible, but, and Brian may be able to speak to that a bit, but the state will supersede.
Okay. All right. It's sounding like it would be best for everyone, including perhaps you, if we waited to see what the state regulations really are, and whether or not you and your solar company can meet the state regs, in which case then, I think you could just withdraw the application.
My understanding was that I'd always had a different understanding than Ms. Cobb. I always thought a municipality could have more stringent state building codes than the state, and if this is considered a more stringent building code, although I appreciate that the town might want to be consistent with the state, I had a different view, but I'm not a professional. And the joy of acting now, because there seems to be a window, is that the state law is not going to take effect for some time, was my understanding, and so any building permit that were issued between now and the time when the state law became effect would be valid. And so that's what I was trying to do, because I knew I would be within 18 inches of the ridge. Otherwise, I actually meant to call Neil Wilson today to discuss withdrawing the application and see about any sort of refund for fees, except it was pointed out to me that perhaps it would be more advantageous for me to seek the variance tonight and then get the building permit before the state law went into effect, so that I could encroach upon the ridge and the 18 inches that was, that the state is going to mandate in whenever that law becomes in effect, so...
I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I would be comfortable with giving a variance to that 18 inches. If you left that 18 inch, whatever the state code is probably going to be, I would be comfortable with granting that. I'm not comfortable with granting whatever.
And I guess my question would be, if the consultant, if the solar company says that I'm going to need that third row, or that second row, and the only way to get it is to come into the 18 inches, then I shouldn't bother coming back?
Would that be the same type of, would he have to wait 18 months, or is that the same...
I thought his question was that if he could not get the 18 inches...
If he, no, his question, I thought it was if we granted up to the 18 inches, and then the representative says you need to encroach more into that, that's his question, would he have to come back? Then my question was, because it's almost the same application, does he have to wait?
I don't know the answer to the question, if it's a variance that were granted, whether you could seek an additional variance. I thought the 18-month prohibition was from a denial, but I honestly am not sure.
Hmm, I think you're right.
I think it's any, I think it's any application.
Denial, isn't it? I thought it was a denial.
Yeah, it's after a denial.
Jim?
Yeah.
Is it possible to adjourn this, and maybe the applicant could come back with the solar company?
He doesn't, he wants to...
Well, he's trying not to do that because he wants to do it.
I understand that, but...
Well, I think...
That's like a month, as opposed to many months.
I think it hinges around when the state regulations would go into effect. Now, usually, there's several months, but I don't know for sure.
Well, if it pleased the board, I'd very much like to ask for three feet on all sides of the length of the variance, and then, obviously, I can't put another full panel on, because I would be over that three feet if it turns out that it was less, or if the advances in the panels have gotten better, I will certainly put on a smaller panel. The follow-up question really is whether the board has given such zero setback variances in the past. I don't, you know, as you can see from the drawing, there are certain areas where there is more room, and there are certain areas where there's less room. The other members of the board who visited the property, we pointed out access points.
Yeah.
We were all there, actually, just at different times.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, and the, I think what it comes down to is really the issue along the ridge lines of the various roofs. And it appears that the state code is going to require 18 inches down from, a gap of 18 inches down from the ridge line. You know, I agree with Betty. I would like to get this settled, and if we can grant a variance for ridge line and not speak of the sides and the bottom, I think that would be consistent with the state, and that would actually give you, you know, a number that you and the installer can work with.
Okay, well, my understanding was that I'm not going to get the panels that I need, because on the barn, that thing goes right up to the ridge, and so I'm not sure that that's going to work. And again, this was the opportunity to get more than what the state required, will require in the future, so...
Well, it's 100% more than the town says you can have right now.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. Knowing that it probably won't be used on all sides.
Well, see, that's the problem. In this, on this board, it almost has to be exact. I mean, we grant variances like three feet, four inches, or 10 feet, two inch. So we're used to, we're not used to granting variances. It's almost like carte blanche, like, wow, okay.
Well, I don't want to be argumentative, and I appreciate your time.
Right, I don't want to either. I'm just trying to make you understand.
I think it's different when it's a side yard setback, and you're building a garage, and the neighbor doesn't know where it is, in terms of a fire perspective, what other access points, because I believe the law exists with respect to fire access, and there are a variety of ways to open up that roof, to vent that roof, even very close to the side of the roof that the solar panels are going on, especially on the back of the barn where those roofs come into one another, so...
Well, it's starting to sound like we just need more information.
Okay.
We need some drawings showing just, you know, where you're going to be able to comply with the announced state codes and where you're not.
Can we adjourn until the next meeting?
And I'm willing to bet that, you know, if you come in next month with these drawings, we'll be able to settle it, and that'll be long before the state regs get published and enforced and so on. The other, and I would have one further question, and so when you're doing this, you state that you need the, what are they, 52 panels? Yeah, to make this work. What, the panels, what, three feet by five feet, is that?
I'm not sure.
Okay. The other thing is, sort of, can you explain why you need the 52? There are some numbers here. Apparently, the peak output of the 52 panels is almost 18 kilowatts. That's a lot of juice for...
There's three dwellings, Jim.
Hmm?
There's three dwellings.
Yeah, okay.
So there's a four-bedroom house in the barn, there's a one-bedroom, there's a four-bedroom apartment in the barn, there's a one-bedroom apartment in the barn, then we have a five-bedroom main house.
Okay.
So the bulk of the, the bulk of the solar is going on the barn, less is going on the house, and it's all going to be single-metered. And as I was explaining to the nice people who came yesterday, some of whom had a question about whether it was going to be master-metered or not, I'll be able to save my tenants the meter fee from Central Hudson by putting a master-meter and then sub-metering to them without making any money myself. So it's more attractive for them to rent that apartment, because they save $30 a month or whatever the Central Hudson, as long as, and my risk is, they need to pay me the electricity because I'm going to be paying the bill, and they'll reimburse me for whatever's used. There's no real profit incentive for me, I'm sure, you know, somewhere when the system's paid off, maybe I'm their utility company, but by then, those systems will probably not be efficient. So it's largely, you know, for the benefit of the environment. It should be cost-neutral in the end of the, after a certain number of years, and should save them the meter fee, but it's three dwellings.
Okay. Now, that's a piece of information that wasn't in the application. Okay. All right. Well, that helps explain the number. Okay. All right. Larry, any questions?
No questions.
Tony?
Good morning.
No questions. Carmen?
No questions.
Okay, so I guess where we are is, you're going to bring us to the drawings. Okay. All right. So is there, well, let me see, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application on New Hackensack Road? Okay. If not, is there a motion to adjourn this item to April?
11.
April 11?
So...
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. I think we'll be able to take care of it then. Thank you for your time, and I'm sorry that I'm not more prepared.
I'm sorry we couldn't help you as quickly as you would have liked.
Yeah.
Okay. Item five, Maria Alfaro, 43 Inwood Avenue.
Solar panels.
Okay. Good evening. Both just...
Vladimir Alfaro, Maria Alfaro, my wife.
Betty?
Mr. and Mrs. Alfaro, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truths, I hope you got?
We do.
To be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of New York.
Okay, well, can you tell us what you're planning to do?
Sure, so we currently have a pool in our backyard and we actually got zoning variance back in 98, 99 when we first had the pool installed. But I wanted to make sure that everything was up to, that was in order for the new pool because we want to get a new pool that is two feet longer, not wider, but longer. We currently have a variance that is 9.9 feet, 9 inches to the line, to the property line. And so that's why we're here. That's one of the reasons and the second reason is because we actually had a build, we actually had a deck built back in 2003 and that deck is 6.6 feet from the property line. So I want to make sure that we get the zoning variance for both.
Okay, all right, so, all right, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Digging out the, okay, Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No question.
Okay, when we were out there, we noticed that around the pool and the deck, there's a fence and a number of trees.
Correct.
Pretty large trees. Those will all stay?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Those are my trees and that's obviously my fence, yeah. All of that will stay as is.
Okay, and the, the pool is no closer to the sideline, it's just getting.
Exactly.
Going further a little bit.
The current size is 15 by 24, the new pool is 15 by 26.
Okay, so, okay. Larry?
No question.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay, and by the way, the deck or the fence and the trees look very nice and so on. I'm glad they will stay there.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address 43 Inwood Avenue? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Robert Cerulo, 15 Pine Tree Drive. Is there anyone here from 15 Pine Tree Drive? Okay, well, we will, we will move on.
To number one?
Item seven is Texas Road House, 2323 South Road. Oh, they're not, they're not here yet? Okay, all right, so now we're back to item number one. Mike Neshewat, 111 Spackenkill Road.
Doing anything with Cerulo or going to wait till the end and adjourn it or something?
Or Cerulo.
Well, let's wait, maybe someone will show up. If not, we will, I think it would be just fair to adjourn it. Yes, sir, so if you'd state your names.
Good evening, Ernie Martin, engineer for the applicant. And this is the owner applicant, Mike Neshewat.
Mr. Martin and Mr. Neshewat, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truths, I hope you got?
I do.
I do.
Be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, so you want to describe what the project is and why you need variance?
Mr. Neshewat is the owner of the property at 111 Spackenkill Road, owner, and he currently occupies the residence. The house is about 5,300 square feet, of which about 1,300 square feet is a one bedroom apartment. The house is fully CO'd, has its proper COs in order and has a separate entrance to the apartment. And this evening, the purpose of this application is to establish an accessory apartment to the structure.
Okay, all right, Christine, any questions?
Okay, so it says in the application that it is a one bedroom apartment because we couldn't see inside, so we didn't, we don't really know what's.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all from me.
It says that it was, the application must have been a typo because it says here that it was built in 1946, it wasn't built in 1946.
Well, that's, I think that's what we took off the information. I think that house has been added to over the years, is my understanding.
Because when I looked it up, it said it was built in 1985. It looks more like a 1985 house.
It does.
I think that's a typo.
Okay.
Now, I have another legal question. It says that, well, in the, in the code itself, it says that the apartment can't be more than 35% or it can also cannot exceed 400 square feet. Is that still valid, the 400 square feet? Brian?
I don't know, I don't have a code with me. I don't think I do.
Because I, you know, I have this old thing and sometimes, at any rate, it exceeds both. Are you going to live in the apartment or in the rest, the big portion of the house?
The big portion of that.
The big portion. That, that same house was here and I think you were the representative back in 2014 and then it was withdrawn?
That's correct.
You were the same representative at that time, right?
Yes.
Okay, so in the rest of the house, because on the tax sheet, it says it has five bedrooms and four baths, I take it that the bigger portion of the house has the four bedrooms and the apartment has one? Because when we were in there a couple of years ago, it appeared that the apartment had two bedrooms, one up and one down. And the stairs, when we went in by the kitchen and we made a left downstairs where the apartment is, and then you, the stairs were over like in, almost in the middle of the apartment and there was a whole big room right there that on this plan now shows as being part of the regular portion of the house. And I, I don't, I don't recall it being connected, I mean, I don't know how you would use that. Unless that room is just blocked and never going to be used, I don't see how it could be a part of the plan that you gave us.
Yeah.
The downstairs plan, this one.
Right.
This portion, this big room right here, right out in front of the building?
That's, that's the garage.
In front.
And that's the garage, that's part of the main home.
Okay, this, all right, so that's the garage. And the stairs went like right in here somewhere.
Yes.
And when you got up to the stairs, it split off.
Right.
There was a room here and a room here and the last we knew both of those rooms were part of this accessory apartment. So is that not the case now? Because that's not what it looks like on here.
It looks like it's being used for.
Oh yes, and the garage does appear to be.
Looks like it's an apartment, not a garage, it's being lived in, or has been lived in.
Well, wait, I don't know.
The garage appears to be occupied not with a car but with people, or has been occupied with people.
Well, that's part of the main house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not.
Well, you just said it, you just said it was a garage, right?
Well, it's a garage area, but.
There is someone living in there.
No.
There's a garage.
The garage, no. It's a two car garage.
There's no cars in it.
That's what it shows on here.
Yeah, but what we saw.
Yeah, I know, but what?
Shows.
See, it's all blacked out, so you can't.
There's, there's a garage area.
Yep.
It's a two car garage and then there's the, then there's the main home, that's the one first level. And then, then you have the upper level, but as you go in, there's a side, there's a side door that goes into the apartment and as you mentioned earlier, from there, there's stairs that go upstairs.
Stairs that go up.
Right.
And then, then it like branches off.
Right, it does. If you look at the, which, the upstairs is above the garage area as well.
Right.
If you look at the second floor on the next page.
That, you've got that marked as 935 feet, square feet.
Square feet, that's correct.
And then downstairs is, so it's like 1,200 square foot apartment.
Yeah, if you take the 357 on the floor, first floor and the 935 in the second, that's where you get your 1,300 square feet.
Betty, I found, I did actually bring the code section and it says it should exceed, be greater than 400 square feet.
Okay.
Which we meet.
I'm just reading.
And then the other is the floor area devoted to the apartment shall not exceed 35% of the existing floor area of the one family dwelling. So if the, we subtract, I didn't.
Well, they said, yeah, on their thing, it says 5,500 square feet, is that the whole?
That's the entire house.
That's the entire house.
We had this discussion the last time and I believe we meet that part of the ordinance.
How big is the house without this apartment?
Oh wait, he's got it here.
5335, 5,335 square feet.
So it should be about 1,800, right?
And you can't exceed 35 and we're under that.
One, seven, yeah, okay, okay. Okay, anything else?
Um, no, I'm good.
Okay, Art?
I'll tell you right in front, I'm real uncomfortable without seeing the inside of this thing again, it's been too long. I just don't, something just doesn't feel right.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, I've got several questions. One is, who owns the house?
Michael Neshewat.
Okay, I've got a document here that says that it's owned by Property One Inc.
It's me.
Just you?
And the company.
And the company?
It's not just you.
So there are other shareholders in this company?
Yes.
Well, then it'd be just him.
Okay, so is this then a single family house?
It's a single family house. Yeah, it's his company that owns it. It's not in his name personally, it's in his company name.
Okay, all right. All right, the other, the other, another question I have is, I tried to sit down with the parcel access and tried to make the square footage numbers work and I can't. You know, they've got the original house, then they've got a garage that was added, there was a porch, but it apparently, was an open porch then and was enclosed at some point? Okay.
That might have been probably before he owned it.
Anyway, I, I just, I just can't make the numbers work. And I also share Art's reservations about the layout. And I think before we act on this, we would need to get a floor plan so that we can see what the dimensions are, see what the apartment is going to look like so that we know that it's a, it's a one bedroom apartment. And then another question I have is about the parking. And you've said, well, there are six spaces, but now you've also said that there are two spaces in the garage. Why do you need eight cars for a single family house and an accessory apartment?
We just show that that's what's available, that's what's, that's available to use, all right, whether it's for them personally or for that matter, even if they have guests. We're saying, we're showing that that's the amount of spaces that are there.
Okay. The town zoning code generally prohibits parking in the, in the front of a house.
Right.
Is, has a variance been granted to allow parking there?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. My understanding is that we would have to first grant a variance for front yard parking before we could grant a special permit since parking is one of the requirements for a special permit. Am I right on that procedure, counsel?
That sounds right. I believe, I mean, you would have to ensure that all the criteria required for the special use permit are met prior to issuing the special use permit.
I think, I think that's the way we've had to do it in the past.
Right.
Okay, all right. So, so my sense is that if we could not act on the special permit until we also act on a parking variance.
And that's to have parking in front of the house?
Yeah, yeah. The code essentially says that, you know, without some special variance or something, there should be no parking in, in front of a house except on a driveway that leads to the house. And you have a driveway that leads to the garage, but, but the six spaces are actually off to the side.
Well, then what we can do is we can park on the road to the house. I mean, rather than go back and try to get a variance, I mean, well, we can do that too. I mean, you've got two car garage. So we got, we got the two, we got two cars in the garage and we could have two spaces as you, the driveway that approaches the house and as opposed to doing it on the side.
Well, then you, then you would have to take out the parking pad that's there.
Understand.
Okay, 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 well, all right, let me, let me just stop there and let's see. Larry, you have any questions?
Nothing right now.
Okay, Tony?
Just a comment, you know, the application shows it as a one bedroom apartment. We were, had the opportunity to have access to the inside of the home yesterday and Mr. Neshewat clearly described and it was pretty apparent that the apartment upstairs is a two bedroom apartment, not a one bedroom apartment. That's how he described it to us and when you come upstairs, there's two bedrooms right there. So you have to take a look at, I think the, I think the rest of the board would be very well advised to be able to see the interior. And not only that, but I think the, I think the plans that you presented us with are, you know, not, not really adequate. You just show a couple of squares. It doesn't really show, doesn't really show the apartment as it, as it seemed to exist, at least the way I looked at it yesterday.
Well, the plan you have is not, you know, the footprint of the building is correct, but the interior was not, never measured.
Well, you know, since, since the interior description in your application and the interior appearances I viewed it are dramatically different, I think I'd like to see something a little bit more and I think the board should see the interior of the apartment before rolling on it.
Okay. Carmen, any questions?
Yeah, and after listening to Tony, do you think, Jim, this is a case where we actually want to go in as they had access yesterday or do we want to look at plans? I think we all have some questions.
Well, I think, I think both, yep.
Definitely.
And so I think what, what we can do here is to adjourn this, give you time to come back with some drawings with more information and to, I think probably also submit a, some plan for dealing with the parking question. Let's see, anything else?
A plan of the inside of the house, so we know.
Are you an architect?
An engineer.
Then we should be able to get specifics like we've asked many other people for, footprints, a real footprint with measurements. I think that's what we need here too, for the entire establishment, for the entire place.
So that we can understand. So that we can understand, you know, how big the house is, how big the proposed apartment is.
You want a, you want a floor plan of the first and second floor?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and what the apartment's going to look like.
Plus the, do we need it for the house, too, so we can get accurate? Because they're saying they don't know how big the porch is, was the porch out of?
Well, I don't think we need a floor plan for the house, but we need dimensions.
Okay.
So that we can, so that when we go out there, um, we can understand where, you know, this, the, the total area of five thousand and some square feet, where that, where that number comes from.
Yeah, because I didn't get that number either, I got like four thousand forty-three.
I, me, that's exactly the number I came up with, yeah, yeah. So, um, clearly, there are some things there that aren't, aren't reflected in the, in the parcel access, and that, and that, quite frankly, is the best information that we can access without actually going out there with a tape measure. But, but if you can, if you can supply, you know, the, the dimensions, and then the floor plan for the apartment, that would help a lot.
The, the, uh, the board wants to, wants to see the apartment, simply. The town building inspector and fire inspector will go inside of the apartment anyways, at that point. And after, if, if special use is granted every two years, the building inspector, the fire inspector, and the zoning administrator, per code, will enter the apartment. So. They're going to come into the apartment anyways.
Well, you're saying, you're saying there, there could be yearly inspections?
Two years.
Every two years?
Every two years, after the special use is granted.
But the, but, but before the board deliberates that, you want a floor pan, floor plan, to show the upper and lower with, with the square footage?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and.
And access for the rest of the board to view the inside of the apartment.
Right.
So we'll make an appointment to come back?
Between now and, uh.
April eleventh.
It'll be Wednesday before the next meeting. It's like, uh.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
If you'd want us to, April package, the deadline is?
April sixth, probably.
The deadline.
Okay, all right, but, yeah, yeah, Sandy's just pointing out that, um, the deadline for submitting material would be April twenty-fourth. At noon.
March twenty-fourth.
March twenty-fourth.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, March twenty-fourth. And, uh, oh, and, and, and in addition to dimensions and floor plan, um, a, a parking proposal. Okay, uh, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address, uh, 111 Spackenkill Road? Okay, if not.
Hold on.
All right, is, um.
I think someone.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm, excuse me, I'm. Yeah, or, um, see if, see if that mic is working.
Mic here.
Yeah, good, okay. Okay, if you would both state your names, please.
Irene Monk.
Victor Fernandez.
Fernandez, is that what you said?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez, and.
And S.
And S. And Ms. Monk, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The only comment we have is, we've been through this before, obviously you recognize us, is I do appreciate, and I wanted to say, was that all the questions I wanted to ask were asked by the board, and the concern we have is that the parking lot, that's what it is. It's existed for, I think, fifteen years now. It's never had a variance. Initially, when the prior owners put it in, they put the walls, they're on top of the gas lines. The, they paved over the sewer line, which was jackhammered out when we had sewer line work done. So this has been like an ongoing thing, and, and I do think it needs to be addressed at this point, because Mr. Neshawat has a wrecker, a big tow truck. And periodically, it ends up parked in the driveway. Um, sometimes overnight, sometimes for a couple of days at a time. So the ability for not only tenants to be there, but commercial vehicles to be parked there, which I know are not, um, which are against zoning code. You know, we want to live in a residential area. So I, I just want that being taken into consideration. You know, he has every right to do what he wants with his property, as long as it's done, that it says a standard, that any other person standing in this, you know, asking for these applications is going to be given the same granting, we're, we're setting precedents. So I appreciate that you ask great questions, thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, um, if there's no one else in the audience, um, okay, is everybody, everybody satisfied with the, the additional information that we should be getting, and, okay. In that case, is there a motion to adjourn app, application number one to the April eleventh meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, item number six, uh, Robert Sorolo. Okay, for fifteen Pine Tree Drive? Nope. Okay, they don't appear to be here. Um, I, I move that item number six be adjourned to the April eleventh meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. And that brings us to item number seven, Texas Road House, twenty-three twenty-three South Road. Yeah, that, that isn't, that is a genuine antique, right?
Talking about, for the equipment.
Betty, don't go there. Thank you, Betty. Okay, so if you'd state your name?
Yes, I'm Kelly Leibolt with Page Park Associates.
Ms. Leibolt, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing, truths that help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to try to orient you on this project. I don't think we've been before the board, but we have been before the planning board extensively for this project. So this site is, um, what is the former Shot Lithotech property. So for those of you who remember, it's across the street from Casper Kill Country Club, and right now, there's a large pile of rubble and cars and so forth parked on there. So that's the location of this project. On this map, Route Nine is over here, and then this is Anthony Drive, which goes up the side, and that's a private road that's owned by the apartment complex in the back. And then the adjacent parcel, which would be down here, is the Mazda dealership. It used to be the Saturn car dealership, so it always has a history of being a car dealership. So we did receive approval from the planning board, a conditional approval, um, based on this board's decision for the construction of a Texas Road House and an advanced auto, so two projects. So the first building here on the south end is Texas Road House, and then the second building is an advanced auto. So this project actually took quite a bit of time with the planning board, which is kind of how we got before you here tonight. There were a lot of site constraints, even though everyone thinks you look at the site, and it's easy to kind of put boxes, um, all over the property. There were, um, some restrictions because this road is a private road, and it, again, is owned by the apartment complex in the back. So we were constrained on moving the access points, the ingress and egress. There's a deed restriction on the property, and we were also constrained of allowing anyone else to come in. So any of the other properties to the north of here, a lot of times county planning suggests that you make an interconnectivity, so we were restricted on doing that. And we were also restricted on some of the utilities and the DOT, um, location of the sidewalk that they wanted, which was a, a long process. So we spent a lot of time with the planning department and the planning board on literally taking these boxes and moving them around the site, and this is ultimately what we came up with. So here's Route Nine, you have a parking area in the front here with porous pavement, and then the two buildings and some parking in the back. And what ended up is this corner of the building, which is in yellow, so it, it is pretty small, but it is, um, a ten-foot corner of the building, is in the setback. So it's outside of the landscape setback, which is thirty feet on that side, but it's a forty-foot building setback in that area. So we're within that area, so we're over, over the line by ten feet. And so when we were going through this, you know, we went through the balance test, knowing we were going to have to come before the ZVA, and said, well, is it going to be, uh, you know, de minimis issue? Is it a, a small issue? And since Anthony Road is a private road, this has been heavily traveled for years, and the adjacent parcel is Mazda, which essentially has no landscaping. They park right up and onto Anthony Drive. We didn't think that it was going to be that much of an impact to the adjoining neighbors. We also went, I think way overboard, but I think it's going to look beautiful on the landscaping plan on this side. So Texas Road House's entrance is actually faces the south, so it faces Anthony. And we have huge, um, big seating areas there, there's benches, there's this sort of curved sidewalk with bollard lighting, so it's really pretty when people wait to eat, which sometimes can be up to an hour and a half for this restaurant. So we wanted to make that corner look very, very nice. So even though the building's in the corner, it's really secluded and kind of protected by that heavy landscaping plan that we have in that area. So we wanted to come before you to try to seek that variance for the corner of the building. I do have the renderings, if you want to see them, I thought you might want to. So this is the Texas Road House, and this is the front, the side that would face Anthony Drive. And so it's, it's little, this actually is the dumpster location, so it's this little corner of the building that hangs over into that area. And if you want to see advanced auto, I brought those, too. That's the advanced auto. So we did a modified building for advanced auto. It's not their typical building, and we worked hard with the, um, franchisee to get them to change the look, so it matched the town better. And that's it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
All right.
Yeah, um, sorry. The parking is going to be along Route Nine?
Yes, it is.
When you come in from the light, you're going to make an immediate right, swing right into the parking lot?
Yeah, it's a one-way. Yeah, this is a one-way in, and then all of these parking spaces, that's one of the things we did a lot with the planning board, was back and forth on ninety-degree parking or angled parking. So everything was changed, so it's angled parking, so it encourages drivers to just drive right through.
And then you wrap around and come out where?
Right here.
At the top, at the top of the hill?
Yeah, which is the same, these are the same location that is there now.
Right.
That's, that's right, that's right.
Okay, that's, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is this, is this one of these deals where you've got two front yards?
It is. I should have mentioned that, yes, thank you.
And the, the fact that the one road is a private road is, is, doesn't matter? Okay, okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to address twenty-three twenty-three South Road? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I meant to ask our assistant, um, did the county say anything? Okay, all, everything, fine, okay, good. All right, that, um, brings us to the end of the, uh, public hearings. Uh, do we want to take a short break, or keep going?
Let's keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going, okay. All right. Okay, um, item number one, uh, 111 Spackenkill Road has been adjourned to the next meeting. Um, item two, Barbara Fitzgerald, 108 Avenue, variance to allow an enclosed deck to be located four feet from the side lot line where twenty feet is required. Uh, this is a type-two action, so there's no.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to do the people that are here.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Since they've waited through this.
Uh, let's.
It's not going to be long, but in courtesy, can we?
See, so. Let's see, what, um, Inwood Avenue, is that?
I know they're enjoying themselves immensely, but.
Okay, okay. Oh, Autumn, Autumn is here, okay.
Five is here.
Nineteen, okay, item three, uh, nineteen Autumn, Frank Calura. Uh, nineteen Autumn Drive, a variance to allow an existing, um, pool with a proposed deck addition to be located sixteen feet, eight inches from the side lot line where twenty feet is required. The type-two action, um, and in your packet, you'll find a staff report recommends that this be approved. Any discussion, comments?
No.
I think this.
Clear cut.
I think this one's pretty, pretty straightforward. So Christine, do you want to make the motion on this one?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve, uh, item three has been made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals, approved, seven-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, item number five, Maria Alfaro, forty-three Inwood Avenue. Um, this is a variance to allow a proposed pool, or a enlarged pool, um, with existing deck addition to be located six feet, six inches from the rear lot line where thirty feet is required. This is a type-two action. So there's no environmental review, there is no staff report on this. So let me make the motion and try to, um, come up with some findings. I move that the board approve the request for variance set forth in item number five. Decision's based on review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members. In approving this, uh, variance, the board adopts as findings as follows. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created. Uh, the board finds that the proposed pool is simply replacing an existing one, so it will be no change to the character of the neighborhood. The board also finds that the, um, current pool, um, is well screened from, um, all of the neighbors by an existing fence and, uh, rows of mature trees. Item two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible other than the variance. Given the, um, the constrained size of the backyard, um, there's really no other place where a pool could be located. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Arguably, you could say that, um, it is substantial because, um, thirty feet is required, and, um.
Variance is twenty-three.
Twenty-three. On the other hand, um, it also could be argued that the additional two feet of the pool is, is very small compared to, um, what's there now. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition, uh, the board finds that there will be very little change. Five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Arguably, it was self-created because they made a decision to put in a new pool. On the other hand, there, there are really very few options, um, and in any case, the fact that it's self-created doesn't prohibit the granting of the variance. So move.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if not, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, approved?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Enjoy.
Okay, um, let's see, um.
Back up to Barbara?
Or Texas Road House.
Or, we, we, yeah.
Let's do the Texas Road House.
Okay, um, item number seven, Texas. Okay, um, item number seven, Texas Roadhouse, 2323 South Road, a variance to allow the principal structure to be located 30 feet from the front lot line where 40 feet is required. The planning board has already issued a negative deck on the environmental review. There is no staff report. Um, okay, let me.
Where is?
Not that I have.
2323 South Road?
Yeah.
No staff report?
No.
Maybe you're the only one, Betty.
Oh, no, never mind, never mind. This is, this is Kelly's work. That's why I thought it was.
Okay, all right, let me, let me see if I can invent another staff report.
Actually, it's pretty good. That's why I thought it was a staff.
Hire her.
Okay, um, okay, let, in fact, let's, let's do that. I've got it right here.
Okay.
All right. I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number seven. Decision's based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the result of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the, the determinations on questions.
One through five of the application.
One through five of the application, um, which actually looks quite complete. Okay, so the board adopts as findings the, um, the answers to questions one through five of the application. So move.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? This one, this one I think is pretty straightforward.
Easy.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Approved, 7-0. Okay. All right, now we're back to Barbara Fitzgerald.
Oh, I lost that one now.
Item number two, um, a variance to allow an enclosed deck to be located four feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. It's a type 2 action and in the packet, there's a staff report recommending that this be approved. Um, let's see, Betty, I guess.
Sure, I make a motion that we approve the area variance in item number two and ask that the board grant this variance based on the decision from the testimony of the applicant, the testimony from the public hearing, the result of site visits by board members and the staff report and ask that the board adopt as findings the determinations as found in one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion to approve, this is made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Approved, 7-0. All right, item number four, Michael Tukordova has been adjourned to April 11th.
We're done.
And item number six, the applicant was not here, so that is being adjourned also to April 11th. The final item on our agenda is a request from the planning board to allow them to be lead agents for the McDonald Heights Town Center on Duchess Turnpike. Any discussion on that?
What is that?
That's, that's the one that's, the Frank Farms.
Oh, okay.
And it's on both sides of the Route 44. This is, this is going to be a complicated case and, um, I'm just as happy to let the planning board stew about that. Okay, I move that the Pikiptse ZBA agree with the request from the planning board that they serve as lead agent for the environmental review on the McDonald Heights Town Center project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Unless anyone has any other business to bring before us, is there a motion to adjourn?
You really want to adjourn us so early?
Oh.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.